Good evening and welcome. Happy November, everybody. We are so glad that you all are joining us for our meeting this evening. We do like to begin with our Pledge of Allegiance, and our Vice Commander of the American Legion is here. So if you'll please stand up and join us in the pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before he gets out of here, I want to say Happy Veterans Day to Dana Jackson, our Vice Commander of the American Legion, and Happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans in Radford, including our veteran up here. So, thank you. At this time, we'll ask that you join us in a moment of silence. You can use this time for silent prayer, silent reflection to prepare for the meeting, whatever you choose. Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for citizen comments on public matters. So if you have something you'd like to state or a question you'd like to ask, please come down to our podium, use the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. The floor is now open. And no mad dash to the podium, so we will close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Council members, you all have the minutes from the October 28th meeting. Does anybody have any changes, or do we have a motion to approve as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Coming up, Saturday, November 30th, is nationally recognized as Small Business Saturday. Of course, that's the Saturday after Thanksgiving. It comes after Black Friday, and it's really all about improving the local economy, getting folks out to shop for the holiday season, having people participate with many of our small businesses. And Mrs. Foster has a resolution to present for us this evening.
City of Radford, Small Business Saturday. Whereas the city of Radford celebrates our local businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas the city of Radford is a vibrant community with a business sector that includes several locally owned small businesses, and whereas small businesses are a vital component of the Radford economy by creating quality jobs for our residents, engaging philanthropic and civic concerns, helping to preserve key business corridors, and improving quality of life for our citizens. And whereas the city of Radford values local small business and celebrates the diversity of goods and services they provide and the contributions they make to our community, and whereas Radford supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas a significant amount of commerce across the United States is conducted around the Thanksgiving holiday, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and whereas residents of Radford are being asked to support local small businesses on Small Business Saturday, November 30th, 2024, and throughout the year, as a way to boost the local economy and strengthen Radford's small business community. Now, therefore, the City Council of Radford, Virginia, does hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday, and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Council, I make a motion that we accept this.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Well, Dan McKinney, our Director of the Chamber of Commerce, is here. Dan, if you'll come down and enlighten us a little bit, and also receive your proclamation.
You want him to enlighten us first?
We'll let him enlighten us first.
That's not really my proclamation, but I certainly want to thank council for recognizing the importance of our small business community, just a huge part of our local economy, our businesses. So the one key number that I keep coming back to in all my research, and it's not just for Small Business Saturday, it's all year long, right? So 68 cents of every dollar is recycled within our community. So if you think 100 bucks, 1,000 bucks, I mean, that's a big number that's recycled over and over and over again. So that's payroll, that's building taxes for the city, that's goods and services purchased from local suppliers and vendors, services provided by tradesmen, and then profit made, hopefully, that the business owners can go out and spend and enrich somebody else as well. So as you can tell, I'm very passionate about all business, but small business people have a truly special place in my heart. They put on the line every day. So I would encourage people to shop local if they can. We were really, really lucky in Radford, New River Valley, Southwest Virginia. There's lots of ways you can make an impact and have a special gift or present for somebody as well. You just have to take that little extra time to go shop. So if you go to Radford Coffee Company for a coffee, they've got a bunch of stuff now that's available, which would make a great gift for a coffee lover, right? There's lots of other examples that I can go into, but I just wanted to come and say thank you for making this proclamation. Small business community is very, very important to the city of Radford, and I do everything I can to take care of them, but I hope everybody does as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you for all you do. Can we give Dan a big round of applause? Don't run off. We want to present you with this proclamation. But you can accept it on behalf of our business community. Thank you. And I will just say, to add to what Dan shared, it is so important because the dollars that help our small businesses, help our schools, help our parks, help our roads, they help everything throughout our community. And so if you can shop on Small Business Saturday here in Radford, please do so. Think about possibly even getting a gift card from a place, if there's some place that maybe your friends haven't been to. That's a way to get them to be able to go down there. It makes a great gift to show them something new, and you enlighten their life by giving them something that maybe they didn't know about. So, thank you very much, Dan, and I agree completely with everything you had to say this evening. Moving on, under our public hearing, at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about the fact that Chantel Cable Television LLC has been upgrading the fiber to the home system in Radford. As part of that, they need to construct four 32-inch by 36-inch utility cabinets to accommodate their telecommunications equipment on city-owned property located at 420 Prospect Street, and they proposed to lease a 20-foot by 20-foot space from the city. So at our last meeting, we planned a public hearing that was advertised, and at this time, we will open the floor for the public hearing.
My public hearing may be advertised as required.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And it seems like we might not have any comments here, so we will go on and close the public hearing, and we will move on to old business, which is Ordinance 1809, the actual lease request that we were just talking about. David, do you have anything you want to share about the lease?
No, Mayor. The lease is pretty straightforward. City Attorney has reviewed it with Chantel. It is part of their program, the fiber to the home. This should be an advantage for us as they improve the system. As you may recall, kind of at the end of COVID, they started announcing plans to improve the system throughout the entire city, and a pretty sizable investment in our community, and that process has been underway, and this is going to help them with that. Melissa, have you had any other comments? This allows them to put four cabinets in to house the equipment that's going to support that program.
We've had no additional comments. We do have a site plan in our hands, so our staff is reviewing it for compliance. So we should have it pretty, I mean, they're ready to move forward very quickly, so I could see it first of the year.
Fantastic. Fantastic.
Nice to see these. We've longed for broadband fiber improvements for our community for a while, and it looks like these kinds of things are going, and plus the other contacts we've had from other companies are going to provide that for us.
Absolutely. And I did want to point that out. First, we'll get to Ordinance 1809, then I do have a couple more things to say. Council members, you all have Ordinance 1809. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion that we do so?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I did have a note from someone. When we were going through this process, we've done several of these just in a very short period of time. Chantel, obviously, has been our long-term provider, and they're doing their upgrade, and we knew this was coming for quite some time. Recently Comcast came to us, and we did an agreement with them as well. Those are two separate things. One is not replacing the other, so that's great news for Radford, because again, having more fiber to the home available, better broadband available, that's going to help everybody. So we just wanted to point that out. And I had some people ask, was this a replacement? Was this going to be a different company? How was all this coming together?
And associated with that, Mayor, as an update, we have had contact with Comcast. They are advancing pole attachment discussions with them.
Fantastic. Outstanding. Moving on to new business. The city of Radford has had a very long contract, almost 20 years, with Appalachian Power Company for wholesale power purchase. We knew that that contract was going to end in May of 2026, and these are not things that you can really wait to the last minute to negotiate and to address. And so as such, for the last couple of years, we've been working behind the scenes to try to determine, you know, what our contract looks like, what our options would be, working with the Blue Ridge Power Agency, which is a group of utility providers from municipalities around the area, and trying to find out what would be best for our community. So we have some things that we're going to talk about tonight. Tim Logwood is here from the Radford City Electric Department to share a little bit of the information about how Radford's power purchase is going to operate as we move forward. And then we've got some things to talk about in terms of some agreements to look at, and then we'll move forward from there. So, Tim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for again letting me come and speak and talk about power supply and procurement. As Mayor indicated, we're about the end of our 20-year APCO deal, and this particular resolution tonight that we've asked for you all to consider is a resolution to approve master of power purchase and sale agreements for the term June 1, 2026, through December 31, 2028, for the city of Radford. And months ago, you know, we put out with the Blue Ridge Power Agency, an RFP, it was a little bit August of 2023, for market-based power. We've been on this cost-based power, which has some limitations. It doesn't allow us to develop our own generation resources. So, you know, with council's direction and our recommendations, market power is develop our own portfolio for power procurement. That will allow us to do long-term power purchase agreements, you know, shorter-term power purchase agreements. We can kind of mix that up, so we're not exposed to one general power supply. We can go with multiple companies. We can do renewable energy. We can blend all that in over time. So the RFP basically is for a two-and-a-half-year period to get off this contract. And Blue Ridge Power Agency, there's market, as far as market-based products and what we are considering here tonight, we've been on a load following contract, and Appalachian Power has given us 100% of our power, other than what we generate with our hydro plant or what we get out of the SEPA plant. But on the market, one of the considerations we can do over this two-and-a-half-year period, this is market power, you'll be considering basically two options. One's a market power option. The other option is what they call a fixed shape product. So I want to go through this product first, just to let you know what the advantages and disadvantages are. So, two-and-a-half years, it's a fixed price. There's no price fluctuations. It's lower maintenance administratively. Scheduling service is done by the provider. We may or may not yet have to be a PJ member. The disadvantages of a load following product is there is a premium for that. There's, the supplier takes on more risk. The city doesn't have to take on that risk, so we're paying a little extra premium for this product. With a load following, or excuse me, with a fixed shape product, we may be susceptible to extreme weather events. In this scenario, the supplier would cover that, cover that risk. The other disadvantage, there's not a lot of companies offering this product. While pool of sellers, you know, competition may not be as great as it would be for a fixed shape. Another disadvantage, at the end of this two-and-a-half-year period, we're at the mercy of the market, you know, for 100% of our load. So, but we can begin to blend in that power from now until then. So, as with either product, capacity and transmission items are additional costs, and they pass through, so that, you know, there's no difference between those two products as far as the transmission and the capacity charges. But that's one product. So the other product is a fixed load shape. This is our ultimate goal beyond two-and-a-half years, is to have this developed, but we can go on it now with, you know, this resolution, depending on the cost. So there's more diversity in your portfolio. There's more competition. As I mentioned, you're paying a lower cost for this energy. You can have rate stabilization because you can, you know, you can get renewable energy or whatever for a long term, if that's what the city desires. And since there's only about 20% of our load that would be subject, you know, to market volatility, and the market's going to go up, it's going to go down. So, the disadvantages, as I just mentioned, the risk of the market. We do have to contract separately for those blocks of energy to be scheduled. And again, capacity and transmission, regardless of which product we choose, is no difference. So our attorney and the Blue Ridge attorneys have worked with several other suppliers that were named by GDS as far as competitive suppliers, American Electric Power Services, their energy side of their business, Nextera Energy, both of those are fairly big companies, Title Energy, CMS Energy, and Shell Energy. City Attorney has negotiated those market-based agreements, those EEI agreements, master EEI agreements, and I think he has provided, you know, review, and he's accepted the terms and conditions of those. So that'll be part of the resolution, is accepting those five agreements with these five companies. So there's also options for the fixed load shape and the load following. You know, we have been looking at renewable energy, and we do have a renewable energy solar project that we are looking at. We haven't, we don't have the final terms and conditions of that energy. So either of these products can be with or without that potential energy. So, you know, that's in the resolution. It gives us that option. Whatever product we choose, that we can reduce those energy purchases. If the solar system comes online in year 2028, we can reduce those energy purchases then. We would still bring to you, you know, some solar energy contract or cost, you know, for that supply if that develops. Just to summarize what's in the resolution, so it approves the EI Master of Purchase Power Sales Agreement with the five suppliers, and again, the term is June 1, 2026, through December 31, 2028. It authorizes the city manager to execute these master agreements on behalf of the city. It authorizes the city manager and/or director of electric to execute one or more confirmation agreements with the lease cost supplier, subject to certain terms and conditions. And how that works, you know, our consultants probably in a couple weeks will go out for live pricing, and that pricing comes in. The resolution has criteria for that pricing. If it exceeds a certain amount, we can choose one option. If it's below a certain amount, it falls back to the other option. And I think, David, you will read the resolution. We can, we'll get clarification on that if you have any questions. So there's a not-to-exceed price on both options. And the recommendations will be based on price. Either energy product can be adjusted down, as I mentioned, in 2028, if the city wants to consider participation in a solar purchase power agreement in the future. The confirmation agreement for either product is intended to meet all of our energy-only requirements. You still have to do the capacity side of that. And I do also want to add that this procurement does not include any requirements for Radford University. We'll handle their load, you know, as you're aware of their situation, and desire to go off the city will handle their energy as a separate part of the city's portfolio.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council members, before Tim leaves, do you all have any questions?
I don't have any right now, Tim. Thank you very much. You gave us a great presentation several times before this one, and I appreciate all the information you've come together and gotten.
Well, thank you, and it's been a team effort. David's leadership and GDS and our city attorney looking at things. So it's been a challenge, but I think we're almost there.
Yes.
Question. So we were talking about how we're revisiting this after 20 years, and now we have this two-year, plus or minus, contract. Can you talk about why we're doing that? Is it a new climate where now we're only, you know, looking at a couple years down the road, opposed to such a long commitment?
Well, most, unless it's a newly-developed solar plant, or, you know, companies aren't providing long-term contracts like this, you know, like we've had in the past. So, you know, market purchases are only out a few years. You may get a block of energy 24/7, you know, out five years, but most of the energy blocks aren't going out that far. So I think, you know, suppliers, you know, looking out too far in the market, that, you know, they're, you know, they don't want to price it out too far in the market.
And two years is the common term now?
I don't know if there's a common. I mean, you know, we're, we put it out for two-and-a-half years, and so we had a good response from that. So some may be willing to go longer, you know, obviously some may not. But if you're developing the solar plant, you know, you want customers for the duration 20 years. So that's something that you might get for that duration. But other than that, market power, they're short-term contracts.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm gonna, I do want to ask you just a couple things in line with what Ms. Foster said, and correct me if I'm wrong. The market is evolving so rapidly because there's so many more options, and currently, we've been restricted in our 20-year contract with APCO, with Appalachian Power, to only the power we were generating at the time, which was the Little River Dam, correct?
Correct.
So if we had a great opportunity to bring in additional turbines in the river, for example, or solar plants, or wind, or whatever that happens to be to generate more power, under our current contract, we're not able to do that. This provides us with an ability to generate our own power if we choose to, to participate in other agreements, all those kinds of things, correct?
Correct.
So I think that's an important distinction for folks to understand as well. This is a rapidly evolving market. Things are changing quickly, and to Tim's point, you know, there just aren't long-term contracts because things are changing so much. So it provides us with some opportunity. It's definitely scary because it's nice to know you've got a locked-in agreement for 20 years, if you think that's going to serve all your needs. But also, we're well enough ahead of this that we're able to watch these markets, to look at this. Nothing happens immediately with everybody's power purchase. This doesn't go into effect for about a year and a half, correct? So I want people to know that, too. It's not like December, January, suddenly your power is on this new purchase agreement, and this is where we are. We're far enough ahead of this, where we're going to know some more things. We're going to be able to share more information and adjust accordingly. Am I summing it up fairly well?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you've done. I got to tell you, this is a big thing to bite off. For our council members, both current and the council members that served with us when we first started this process, it's kind of an overwhelming thing to look at because you are looking at something that's so substantial for the city of Radford, for our citizens. Obviously, it's a need, but also it has been a resource to provide us with additional revenue, to do a lot of things in the city. That market is changing, and as part of that, we're trying to be as responsive as possible. So what I'd like to do, if it pleases the council, I'd like to read our resolution, so that for the record, everyone can hear what's out there. If we have any questions before we adopt it, we can ask them then, and then we'll go from there. Resolution to approve master of power purchase and sale agreements for the term of June 1, 2026, through December 31, 2028, for the city of Radford, Virginia. Whereas, the city of Radford, Virginia, known as the city, has a longstanding power supply agreement with the Appalachian Power Company, APCO, which expires on May 31, 2026. And whereas, the city is now considering new suppliers and options to meet the city's power supply needs for the term of June 1, 2026, through December 31, 2028, known as the term. And whereas, the city is a member of the Blue Ridge Power Agency, BRPA, which was formed to promote the most reliable for its members. And whereas, on behalf of its members, including the city, BRPA issued a request for proposal for suppliers and options to meet the city's power supply needs, known as the RPF. And whereas, pursuant to the RPF, the city has negotiated proposed Edison Electric Institute EEI Master Power Purchase and Sale Agreements with AEP Energy EEI Master Power Purchase and Sale Agreements with AEP Energy Partners Incorporated, CMS Energy Corporation, Next Era Energy Power Marketing LLC, Shell Energy North America US LP, and Title Energy Marketing US LLC, collectively known as the master agreements. And whereas, the city council of the city of Radford, Virginia, known as the city council, has determined it is appropriate and in the best interests of the city to approve the master agreements to provide for the city's power and supply needs for the term, subject to the terms and conditions of this resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Radford that the master agreements are approved and that the city managers authorized to execute the master agreements on behalf of the city. And be it further resolved by the council of the city of Radford that pursuant to the master agreements, the city manager and the director of the Radford City Electric Department, either of whom may act, are authorized to execute one or more confirmation agreements with the least-cost supplier, subject to the following terms and conditions. So this is where it gets a little heavy, but we're going to read through this. Number one, a load-following energy product, AEP residual aggregate for the term of June 1, 2026 through December 31st, 2028, shall be at an average energy price not to exceed $60.49 per megawatt hour. If the load-following energy product price, AEP residual aggregate, is both, one, less than $5 per megawatt hour higher in comparison to the fixed-load shape energy product, and two, less than $7 per megawatt hour higher in comparison to the fixed-load shape energy product, known as the AEP Dayton Hub, the city council authorizes the procurement of the load-following energy product. Otherwise, a fixed-load shape, as Tim just showed us, fixed-load shape energy product is selected for the term of June 1, 2026 through December 31st, 2028, and it is authorized at an average energy price not to exceed $55.66 per megawatt hour. If the fixed-load shape energy product, AEP residual aggregate, is more than $2 per megawatt hour higher than the fixed-load shape energy product from the AEP Dayton Hub, the city council authorizes the procurement of a fixed-load shape energy product at Dayton, AEP Dayton Hub. Otherwise, the fixed-load shape energy product will be procured at AEP residential aggregate. Number two, if a load-following product is procured, the confirmation agreement will provide for the product to meet all energy requirements during the proposed term and will be subject to the following. A, the confirmation agency may be used to meet needs for ancillary services, resource adequacy, and renewable goal requirements at a pass-through cost. However, the city has the right to choose alternate and separate contracts to meet capacity and renewable goals outside its agreement. Approval of the load-following product should not be understood to be approval of an additional capacity or other renewable purchases. PJM market participation account will be provided by the supplier and term, delivery, node, and proposed not-to-exceed NTE price will be as stated in the proposed new products table below. If a, number three, if a fixed-load shape product is procured, the confirmation agreement will provide for the product to be sized and intended to meet energy requirements during the proposed term and will be subject to the following. A, no capacity, ancillary services, renewable energy goal, or any of the requirements will be covered by this approval. B, PJM market participation account will be established by the city. And C, term, delivery, node, and proposed not-to-exceed NTE price will be as stated in the proposed new products table below. Number four, the selected supplier for a final confirmation agreement on energy requirements shall have participated in good standing in the BRPA, Blue Ridge Power Association, Blue Ridge Power Agency, RFP process, which has been ongoing since September 2023, and be selected as the best offer within the relevant live pricing terms listed above for the city. Number five, the requested load-following energy product for, or fixed-load shape energy product requirements may be adjusted downward in 2028 to include the city's considered participation in a solar purchase power agreement, a PPA. Six, by the time of live pricing, a supplier must have fully executed an EEI master agreement with the city. Number seven, the proposed new products table, again, the wholesale power proposal, the load-following product is less than $60.49 per megawatt hour, would start June 2026 and December 2028. A fixed-load shape product is less than $55.66, starting June 2026 and ending in December 2028. And be it further resolved by the council of the city of Radford that the city managers authorized to execute such documents and take such additional actions as are necessary to effectuate the purposes of this resolution pursuant to sections 2.13 and 2.14 of the city's charter. A second reading of this resolution is dispensed with and this resolution shall take effect immediately. Okay, that's a lot of information, but we wanted to get that out there for the record. Are there any questions among council? What's your pleasure with this resolution to approve the master power purchase and sale agreements for the term of June 1, 2026 through December 31st, 2028?
I make a motion that we approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Melissa, would you call the roll?
Mr. David? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. We're going to continue to talk about this. This is kind of a big deal to be making this decision. Obviously, this is an evolving market. This is an evolving discussion. We have spent hours and hours and hours, just as council time, our staff, thank you, Tim, and your whole team, thank you, David, and everybody who's worked so hard on this. We've gone back and forth on a lot of things. One of the things we're going to talk about for just a second, but I don't think we're going to take action on tonight, we are also looking at the possibility of looking at power supply options for battery energy storage. Having these large battery storage units allows us to charge them up at times of low usage and discharge them at peak times. We work with a private company to do that. Not all of the agreement has been fully vetted and finalized. We still have some details we've got to work through. So council, I will ask that, your pleasure, if we can defer that to December, continue that discussion at that point in time and move forward from there. Not that we'll necessarily take action then, but we will defer any further discussion and planning on that until December. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay. Phew. That's an awful lot of stuff, but this is really good for the city. This gives us a lot of options. People have asked for years, why can't we do such-and-such with power? Well, our contract wouldn't allow it. Now we're going to have options to do things. It brings its own set of challenges, but we'll also be looking at what we can do to best supply the city with power for the 21st century as we continue to move forward and have that be the resource that we need. Moving on, we have one other piece of new business to discuss, ordinance 1810, the Prospect Hill Development Agreement. The city has owned the property known as Prospect Hill in West Radford for 40 or 50 years. The 20-acre site located adjacent to Oakland Avenue and Jordan Avenue is topographically challenged but suitable for residential development options with its R3 single-family zoning. We held a public hearing just a little less than a year ago on December 11, 2023 to seek public comments on the disposition and private development interest. There was only one comment pertaining to open space. So Melissa, I'll turn the floor. Well, do you want me to start with you, David, or go straight to Melissa?
Just a couple of comments. Mayor, as you've mentioned, this has been a longtime piece of property that we've been trying to figure out what to do with it for decades. It exceeds my time here, so it goes way back. Assuming that we probably acquired the property back when the water plant improvements were made, because it does have a significant water line that crosses through it that provides water to three-quarters of the city. It's been around a long, long time. I know over the years councils have pursued options in its sale. We finally, after last year's public hearing, we decided to dispose the property. It's a large tract and it needed to go back on the tax rolls to be able to produce revenue for us and to produce economic development opportunity. We advertised it this time last year and we did have a proposer that stepped forward, Golden Triangle, that's done some of the patio homes here in Radford with a very great proposal for our community to provide much-needed housing for our community, develop the property in very attractive, a very attractive way that's going to serve our community for a long time and produce revenues and produce housing, produce economic development for a good period of time for us way down the road. So we're excited about this opportunity. The sale of the property will be kind of the first hurdle on this. It does have requirements, it's got to go to the planning commission for the subdivision and then also homeowner's approval. It will come back to you all under that guise. Most likely, it'll be four to six months before you see that part of it. Tonight, we're just talking about the possibility of the transfer of the property to Golden Triangle. Melissa's got some background and a few details on it that kind of hit some of the things we're talking about with the amount of land that would be retained for open space, how it will be accessed, because that was one of the bigger concerns we had, being narrow roads, and then also how that was going to work out, and then also utility components that will benefit the city and the developer down the road. So Melissa, if you'll kind of walk them through the details, we'll go from there.
Thank you, David. And he shared most of my speech, but that's quite all right. He deserves that. We have been working on this, it seems like forever. There is a lot of details, absolutely. As David shared, it's 20-acre parcel that the city currently owns. They are proposing up to about 50 homes within this development. One of our main, one of the benefits that we'll get out of this is we have a fairly significant water line that will be upgraded and that, the developer will be actually providing the work to replace that water line. The city will supply the actual piping, but they'll be doing the work, which is a significant improvement for our water system. One of the main concerns that we've had is, or questions, is access off of Jordan, because we all know that's a really short, we are very limited right-of-way through there for expansion. So that is only going to be utilized for emergency purposes only, fire, EMS, police, if there's, you know, we need to get them out quickly, be able to access through Jordan. So this, the impact to that neighborhood will be limited. As we shared, this, looking at 20 homes, of course, when the design comes through, that may change a little bit, but they are really confident in what they're actually producing. As David shared, planning commission will be reviewing that subdivision and it will come before city council for final approval, along with the HOA, as they have done previously in the last two developments. We've worked with Golden Triangle over the last five, six years and they've done a great product for us and really enthusiastic about continued working with our community. So be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
The developer has been very, very good to work with. I mean, they do what they say they're going to do, they make the investment they're going to say. Melissa, the town home sizes are 1,300 on the low end up to 20...
23, and the larger homes will be the ones that look like they come off of Jordan Avenue. So the, sorry, the top of the ridge where the, I apologize. Thanks, Chris. The top of the ridge where the water tank was, those will be the larger homes and then scattered throughout the rest of the development will be the 1,300 square feet.
The density has been dropped dramatically. Recall, it was some discussion about 55 to 62, I think, originally, and dropped back to 50. That seems to be what fits the site the best. It will make the most attractive development and it can handle the traffic and utilities and the green space and
And the topography.
Yeah, very topographically challenged piece of property. So I think it's going to look really good. It'll be some nice views from up there, really pretty area, very pretty area.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions, but I'm just excited to work on this project. We always hear about how Radford needs further housing and I think, as you stated, they have done good developments in this city and they are attractive units and I'm really excited for this. I think that it could be a win for everybody, so.
Agreed.
I was just going to say, when I walked the property, I was very impressed with their ability to retain green space. They spoke about that a lot and how that was a focus to still give it a good community feel and preserve as much of that space as possible for the community.
They understand the importance.
Yeah.
I was going to get to that as well. I think, you know, three things that we really talked about a lot with this, making sure that Jordan Avenue wasn't going to be a main thoroughfare for this, because we know that it's a challenged street, it's very difficult to look at any kind of widening or improvements. So it'll be nice that there'll be access up through some existing streets that don't currently go that far, but they'll be expanding those up through the neighborhood and that'll provide some nice access from Main Street. I think having the green space was an important component of that so that neighbors didn't feel like it was all being crowded in. So it'll still feel very open and very pleasant. And then the water line piece that you mentioned is so important because we need that anyway. That's going to be an important part for the west portion of Radford, having that water line improvement. This is great value for the citizens, even regardless of the additional value that's provided by all these homes. So we've got some win-win-win here, straight out of the gate, that we think sounds pretty good. Now, you know, several people did reach out privately, even though they might not have come to the public sessions, that they were unsure just because this is in their backyard, this is in their neighborhood, how would this work? Well, this kind of addresses not every single thing, but gets to the crux of the matter. Will it still feel very much like the neighborhood that's there? It should, based on the plans that we're initially looking at. Of course, we've still got site development and everything that has to take place and the fact that they won't be adding a lot of traffic to Jordan Avenue, that that's really reserved for emergencies only. So thank you so much for all the work you're doing and for your presentation. So with that, council, we have some work to do. Ordinance 1810 is for the Prospect Hill Development Agreement. This has been a long development agreement and we have a fairly thick packet of all the purchase agreement and everything that goes along with it. Do you all have any questions before we take a look at ordinance 1810?
I did forget to mention, the city attorney has worked with the attorney for the developer to come up with this agreement. They have ratified on their side what our needs are in the development of the resolution.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, council members? All right, do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 1810 to approve purchase agreement for a property commonly known as Prospect Hill? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We can dispense with a second reading since we had four affirmative votes. Do we have a motion to do so?
No move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. David, what do you have for us this evening?
Okay, Mayor, several things tonight. First, I'm going to call on Jerry to tell us a little bit. Calea has been in, as you all know, we have been approved as a Calea community and the police department has done an outstanding job in working hard to make our community the best it can be and meet the very high standards of Calea. And we've got some recent developments and I'll turn it over to Jerry to tell you a little bit about that.
Yes, sir. So I was told in the initial Calea process that getting a Calea accredited was hard, but your first-year assessment was going to be harder. And I'm proud to say that we went through our first-year assessment in September and of the 97 standards that we were evaluated on, we were in compliance of 96 of those standards. And the one standard that we were not in compliance with, we actually met the standard, but our policy had terminology that was not acceptable by our assessor, so we just simply changed the policy. So in the last two years, we've met 281 standards. That's a nationally-recognized standard for law enforcement. And just to kind of touch a little bit about the history of Calea, the background of Calea, less than 10% of all law enforcement agencies in the country are Calea accredited. So it's a remarkable feat for an agency of our size to have these kind of numbers in the last two years. And, you know, when we look at Calea and what it does for our community and for our police department, it's the highest standard for policy development, training, ensuring that we're transparent and community engagement. And I guess the one piece that I really want to add, or that I'm the most proud of, is that what we're doing is getting out. We have had several other agencies contact us to come down and to look at our software, some of our policies and doing, or looking at what we're doing because they're actually interested in becoming a Calea accredited agency as well. So I come here and I get to take the credit, but there's a lot of men and women that work long, hard hours that are very much involved in ensuring that we keep meeting this standard every single year. And I couldn't be more proud of the people that I work with. And I'm also grateful for, you know, the city manager and you guys and giving us the things and the tools that we need to continue to be a Calea accredited agency. You guys have any questions for me?
I think we all just want to say congratulations and thank you for sure. I think we all just want to say congratulations and thank you, for sure.
Congratulations.
You know, this is no small feat. The Commission for Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies doesn't just hand this out, as you said. There's been hundreds of standards you've had to meet. And, you know, one of the things in the last few years, as different communities have struggled with how their police and their communities interact, this is a solution for a lot of that, and helps get us a long way down the road through training, through policy, through procedures. It gets us to a best practice. And as you stated, I'm impressed that, you know, only Blacksburg was a Calea agency prior to us, now it's Blacksburg and Radford, and we have several sister agencies throughout the New River Valley that are now stepping up to that as well. So we thank you so much for everything that you've done. I'll turn it over to council, if you all have any questions or comments.
I do want to say, I was going to say this during my comments at the end, but I just wanted to mention that the Radford University Police Department is now starting their journey with Calea. And the last, not last, since it was earlier today, and I missed it, but the last joint commission meeting, I know that you had mentioned that you were sharing some of your co-response models with the RU Police Department, so not only setting example for us as a city, but setting example for our neighbors. I know that they look upon you guys as, you know, guidance on this step, and I'm really appreciative to see you guys collaborating together and putting forth everything that you've learned with others. You really are exemplary example, too.
Yes, ma'am. And I failed to mention, we actually had to have four focus areas that the assessor looked at, and one of the focus areas was our first responder with mental health issues and how we have a co-responder program. And a lot of that state mandated, but we chose to go ahead and do it, we did not actually meet the mandate, but we chose to go ahead and participate in the program, and it's been nothing but beneficial to us and our community and our system.
And others, so yeah.
Outstanding.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, too, thank you, Chief. I mean, your department is a role model department for the Commonwealth and for the New River Valley, and you have some of the best men and women working for you, and you do a great job leading them, so congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
Thank you much.
David, what else do you have?
But just one more thing with Jerry, you know, I think the, you go sit down, I'm just going to say, you know, Calea represents best practices, and for a small department to achieve this, I think it says a lot. But it says even more beyond those standards. You can't do it without the people, and the people make it all go. Jerry and his team are dedicated to this, they're dedicated to being the best. It's such a small percentage, and I can't say how much I am so proud of them and the work that they've done in this. Let's give them a big hand. Also want to mention, Tim is, this thing with the electric power has been, it has been a lion's lift. I mean, it has been a major thing. We've been dealing with it for 14, 15, 16 months now, I guess, us and three other communities and Virginia Tech. And Blue Ridge Power has helped us through this very complicated process and our consultant. I believe Tim and I, for at least the last eight to 12 months, have talked about this every morning in my office, as the field has changed, trying to figure out what to do next and moving forward. This is going to be different from what we have now. Just a reminder to the public, this does not change anything that we have right now. We have a good contract that remains for the next two years. This will be a great contract, too, because it gives you so much flexibility in moving forward with whatever's going to happen. Nobody knows. I mean, my goodness, just the last few days, a lot has possibly changed as far as how energy is going to be provided to our communities and what sources may be out there, and what we do for energy reliance. So thank you to Tim and the department, and to Mike, and to everybody that's been involved in this process, our consultants. It has been a heavy lift. I'm confident that this is going to be very positive moving forward, and as we learn more. So the stock market of electricity, let's pray that the results are good in the next few weeks, as that is bid out and they start receiving the, I guess, the futures for what's going to happen in power. So thank you all for approving that resolution as we move forward. We'll keep you informed on battery storage, that also has been a moving target, too, and may not be so bad to see what happens in that field, because again, that's another one of those that may change as we're moving forward. So I think we've got really positive things stepping up. So thank you again, Tim. Did want to mention, we've got two folks here from FEMA tonight with us, Brian Smith and Kristen Forte Thomas is with us. They, FEMA has been great to work with. They have been in Radford since the beginning of Helene. I'm going to give you a briefing on Helene in just a few minutes, but wanted to give them an opportunity to tell you about an event that's going to happen here. Brian's going to come on up, I guess, to tell you a bit about an event that's going to help some of our impacted citizens and private properties, before I get into the public side. We're so glad to have FEMA with us. We appreciate all that you all have done, both in the field. They've met with Melissa as it relates to land use, been meeting with Rodney and Jenny as it relates to our claims and damages, and of course, all of us elected officials, as well as appointed folks, including me, as we've gone through this very difficult process of assessing and now going through the rebuild. So Brian, turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, it's my privilege to talk to you about an exciting opportunity we have the next two days for the citizens here in Radford. We're going to have a disaster survivor assistance site set up at the Radford Recreation Center, make sure I get that right, for the next two days, from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., both days. We'll have members of FEMA there that have their laptops open. They will be able to talk with any members in the community that need to register, that haven't yet registered, or they can talk with 84 different members of your community that have already registered. If they got a letter, or they have some additional documentation or paperwork that they need to provide, they can do that. Or they can just answer questions if those folks haven't heard anything yet in a determination. Our FEMA folks can look in the computer, talk to them about their particular case, let them know where it's at, and if there's any additional paperwork they might be able to submit to do that. So we're looking forward to serving your citizens. I would say that Rodney and all of your staff have just been wonderful to work with. We're glad that we're able to come in here and help your community return back to normal and to recover from this. And if there's any questions, certainly let us know. I'll be over there tomorrow morning, and we look forward to helping your citizens through this process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Kristen. We appreciate you all so much.
I want to ask a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, you know, maybe a lot of our citizens are unaware of the scope of things that you might be able to assist them with. Could you give us an idea on some of the things you're able to help with?
Sure. I think that I would go to, Kristen, do you want to talk about, she has a lot more knowledge on, I would say, the specifics that are available to do that? Kristen, is that okay?
Hello, I'm Kristen. Nice to meet you all. No, no, that's fine. So I am not the subject matter expert on all things FEMA, so we do have a whole host of resources available. I have been sending some over to the mayor. We have resources that are really comprehensive for citizens to understand what opportunities they can apply for, what opportunities FEMA can assist them with. So I would prefer to direct you to some resources. If there is anything in particular that you have questions in, I'd be happy to pull those resources for you, so that you have a better comprehensive understanding. Is there anything that you had questions in, maybe more particularly?
I think more, I was just wondering, are you offering for them to apply for things that would give them reimbursement for damages?
The tree fell, or on a roof.
Yeah, just a general idea of, do they need to come and even, you know, go check this out? I mean, are they offering, like, people to come in, like a chainsaw guy to come and fix the tree? Are you offering money to hire them to, I mean, just a general idea of what?
Yeah, under the individual assistance program, there are opportunities like that for reimbursement, that folks, depending on their situation, such as flooding, if they have debris management, that they can come talk to someone at FEMA about that, and it is case-by-case basis, you know, of course. However, folks, we do recommend people coming in person. A lot of times, they do want to talk to someone face-to-face, however, there are opportunities for survivors to go online on FEMA, to go through the application process, to come in person, or they can call as well. But we just like to be a part of the community, have our face here, making sure that everyone knows that they can come and talk to us if they do have those questions. But they do have a different, a couple different opportunities as well to pursue those options for them, if they choose.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you all very much. And so I know that Melissa and David and Rodney and Jenny have all been meeting with these folks and getting that information, and Kristen was kind enough to share some things with me that I passed along to Jenny to share. This is going to be a wonderful event the next two days, so we are so appreciative of you being here this evening, and that we are going to have this opportunity up at the rec center. What else do you have?
Thank you again, and welcome. We appreciate all that FEMA has done for us, and we're glad you're in Radford. Please let us know if we can help you over the next couple of days while you're here. Other Helene-related things, as you know, we continue to do our riverfront cleanups. That is ongoing. Contractors are starting to come in to get electricity back on in shelters and bathrooms and things like that. Most things are operational. Got some good news on Riverview Park, we've got an opportunity to get some bleachers for some replacement, so very inexpensively, so we're going to get those, get the goalpost fixed in Riverview Park, should be back in full operation for any kind of seasonal types of things that go on, whether it's sporting or use of the facility, that kind of thing. We're, got some volunteers that we hope will be coming in this weekend, help us get some mulch back on the playground. And pretty much, other than just getting the bathrooms fixed at Riverview, that's back in operation. All boat landings are open and usable at this point. We still don't have any word yet on the birding platform. I will be surprised if we're able to restore that at this point in time. I think that's going to take some time, and nature's going to have to take back some of that, there's so much damage there anyway for the habitat, as along the river, you know, that's going to be a bit of a challenge. Bissett Park, we should be removing the old pickleball area to at least get that piece of it cleaned up. Most facilities are back and in operation and usable. We've got to get some power back restored to the facility, so you can run crop pots and things like that in some of the picnic shelters, but anticipate that that would be available probably by the time we get to the first of the year. We've got a cabinet in place now, working on the programming, and maybe in about a week or so, we may have, fingers crossed over here, that we may see Bissett Park two-way traffic returned, and that will be a big, big plus when we get rid of the signs. I think that will be a very positive thing for the community as they see going forward. Pickleball's going to take some time, it's a very expensive piece of damage. If we can get fences taken care of at our three parks, the remaining parks, which are playground parks associated with sports, Veterans Field and New River Sports Complex, we should be able to get those operational by the spring as well. I think that's kind of where we stand for the most part. I did want to ask Jerry if you don't mind coming back to the podium, sorry about that. Give them an update on animal control. I will tell you that we received a contribution from Caroline County today, so I cannot say enough about, Jesse, you had mentioned this at the last meeting, that we've really seen our partners around the area and other volunteer organizations have stepped up to help with things like food for the animals, sending in money to help us with rebuilding and that kind of thing. So very positive going forward, as you know. Insurance is not going to cover it, we're going to have to make do with temporary facilities for a little while, but Jerry's here to tell you some good news about where we are on that.
Every time Adele and I sit down to write thank you letters, we keep getting more donations, so it keeps getting pushed back. So I'm forever grateful for the support across the state, and it speaks volumes for Adele and what she means in the animal control world. I know she represents us at the state level, and she has made partnerships across the state that's really been beneficial to us in this time. But right now, we're not much different than what we were. We still have the ability to take the dogs and some of the larger animals, we're doing some repairs to those kennels, and then the smaller animal stuff, we're still using our partnerships with Pulaski and Montgomery County if we have to take those animals in. And then hopefully, you know, long-term, you know, we're looking at getting in there as the best we can, but short-term, you know, we're still managing to make it every single day with what we've got down there. So hopefully, there'll be resolve, and we can get back to full service sooner than later.
Has the pig been caught?
Yes, that was my next question.
Last time I think I said something like that was when I lived in Indiana.
Yeah.
So.
The call came out today, but we were so busy with other stuff that I don't even know what kind of effort we put into chasing a pig down, but not that I'm aware of.
Adele dead, evidently, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The community's been on high alert.
I'm sure once I get on social media tonight, I'll hear all about it.
You will.
It is so cute. Adele is also, I know it's on her Facebook page, but she probably has shared it with the shelter page. Her daughter, who lives in England, is making keychains and bracelets and things like that, trying to raise money. So if you feel so inclined to purchase one of those to help proceeds go to the animal shelter, they are really beautiful, so.
They are.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
In recent years, animal control has got a new meaning with all the different kinds of animals that there are out there. People think of cats and dogs and.
Animals, for sure.
All types of things to those that slither, so a little bit of everything, and barnyard as well. So thank you to Adele and Jerry and all the folks at Animal Control for all they've done to get through this tough time. Animal control, as you know, is going to be a long-term thing. We've had to evacuate animal control four times in the past five years, and probably eight times or so in the past 10. That's going to become more frequent as river issues come up. Anytime we get the chance of flooding, we're looking at that and what we need to do to see if we need to temporarily foster animals out. So we're looking at that long-term, we are looking at that long-term. My short-term is, I watch what I'm saying, long-term. Some of the staff said I'm saying long-term like it's going to be a while, but getting close on that part of it, so starting to talk a little shorter. But great job to all of them, and as we look down the road for other things. I didn't mention my compadre here, Craig's moved from out in the audience now over here next to me, so this is getting more serious as we're moving along, and I'm counting down the final days. So appreciate and welcome, Craig, again, to our community and to Radford. He's going to be a big asset for you all as we move into the interim role, and we go from there and see what things I need to do different or whatever as we go down the road. But I'm so glad to have him and appreciate your all's support over the years, and appreciate you all bringing Craig through Berkeley Group onboard. It is the holidays, and if you go out tonight, you may see, do they start tonight?
They did.
They're out there, saw them on the way down.
Holiday decorations are going up. Thank you to our electric department, it's about a two-week thing, as you all know, it's a big draw and a big plus for our community, brings a lot of people to town as we decorate the entire community and the business district for the holiday season. So thank you to the electric department for making that all happen, and I neglected to mention, a while ago, Tim and his crew have done a great job in helping us in the assessment for everything associated with Helene. And I forgot to mention, Jerry has also been involved with FEMA folks as well, and I was listing the folks out there that are trying to help us through this process. I had mentioned to you all, Tyler to East Main project is dead. The project is just inflation got it, when asphalt and the cost of business have gotten so high. You know, we had a money that came years ago from the state, we applied for several grants to bring that dollar amount up to current value. In the recent reassessment, when you start dealing with 15, 20% increases and a thousand feet of road costing $6 million, it just doesn't become cost-effective for us or VDOT. So for now, that's been put aside. VDOT, we had a meeting with Ray Smoot, our area representative on transportation board today. We thought that went well, and he's willing to help us whatever down the road, so we will be looking at, we will be looking at smart-scale projects as that moves forward and what can happen in that roughly 800 to a million-dollar shortfall, which will probably be more than that by the time we get to it in the next year, year and a half. But it's been all these years, there is a plan in place, so if the developer moves forward, they can move within that original plan and make that go. So wanted to give you a quick update on that. Also, our staff is looking forward to working with our council members. Kelly Archip, congratulations, and Guy Wolford, congratulations to you all on recent elections to council. Please let us know how we can help you out, we being me in the short term and we being Craig in the longer term, but of course, all the staff are always here to help you all, and of course, as always, citizens and our community be the best they can and do all the things that we want to do to be the best and meet best practices. So thank you for that. And I think with that, just a happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Oh, I forgot to mention, the holiday decorations, don't forget, we got tree lighting is scheduled now for December the 3rd, which is a Tuesday, and the parade is also a Tuesday for December the 10th. Folks have asked why so late, because Thanksgiving is falling so late this year, it's pushed everything a little further out, so it's been tough for us to get the parade any earlier. I think the, is the rain date the next Tuesday, I believe?
Yeah, I think you're right.
So hopefully, we won't have to worry about that. And then with that, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And I think that's it for tonight.
Thank you, David.
Sorry for the long report, but a lot to cover. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to turn to our shortest short timer here with Bobby. What do you have for us this evening?
Well, I've been down at Bissett Park, and I don't know what it is about the pickleball courts. Every time I go down there, we don't need to fix them. I mean, they're full all the time. I mean, the fence, the fences, you know, they're all laying down and you got to step over stuff to get on the cord. But I go down there and people are playing, you know, pickleball. So, you know, they're, yeah, I mean, they're dedicated. And also, I just want to thank, you know, Kelly Archip getting re-elected.
Thank you.
And also Guy Wolford for getting elected. And I just want to appreciate everything that Jerry's doing. I see his, I see officers out there working with kids, you know, small children, and they're not in uniform, but they're out there working with the kids and they're making a difference. Just good, top-notch people. And, you know, so I appreciate everything that, you know, you guys are doing. And likewise here with city council. Appreciate everything we're doing. And Tim, we've had many, many meetings, and we're starting to come to, come to the end here. So I appreciate that. So, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. So that's pretty much all I have.
Thanks, Bobby. Kelly, what do you have?
Jesse and I had an amphitheater meeting since our last. We looked at some examples of what it could look like in the future. We also discussed having some events at some larger venues and getting some bigger bands, kind of test the waters and see how that'll go. So we're still working on that. Congratulations to Guy. Glad to have you up here in January. Bobby, I'm not quite ready to say goodbye to you yet. You've got one more meeting with us and walk in the parade if you so choose. But I was at the Polling Springs on the 5th. They were really busy, busier than I think they were two years ago. I just want to thank everybody for coming out and voting, for all of the early voting that we had. I feel like, I didn't check numbers with Lindsay, but I feel like it was probably a lot more than it had been in prior years. So it was great to see everybody there. I did speak to a lot of citizens, and I have a few comments that I would like to relay to our current city manager. There was comments on repainting the lines on the crosswalks at the rec hall. Mainly going towards the front door, those are almost completely gone, going up the steps from the lower level and then the steps to the front door. There were several concerns about that. Speeding on Forest Avenue continues to be an issue. I can speak to that firsthand. That is a road. So I said we would discuss maybe putting up some speeding signs or letting you know how fast you're going. That piece of equipment that we have, they said that they would appreciate that.
Jerry, did you monitor it one time? Go ahead and.
I'm not sure where you would put it, where the best place to put it, because it's kind of windy and up and down a hill. But I just said that I would mention that. He said he has a few of his animals that have gotten killed in the road from speeders. So I told, He didn't say exactly where he lived, and I didn't want to pry about where his exact location was, but it's the length of it. I would say definitely from Delmar going up the hill is definitely that part, because the other part's kind of windy and that big hill. But I noticed that the lights at the Department of Corrections are all flashing. They're all, four of them are flickering. I know we're doing some construction there or putting a new building in, but every light in the, every street light in the parking lot is like a strobe light.
Pearl.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Pearl Office.
Doesn't the sign say?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyway, they're all.
Is it any part of their construction? We'll see if we can check.
They're like strobe lights at night. So, and then also, one of my littlest supporters wanted me to ask about implementing a permanent cotton candy machine in the city. She asked me about that at the polls, so I said that I would mention that. See if we could put that someplace.
I think that's fair.
Put it here in the council chamber.
That's fair.
Pay them to come get cotton candy when they come to the meeting.
That's fair.
It's a circus sometimes anyways, so might as well, right?
Charlie, we're going to work on budgeting that in, because I think we all agree that we like cotton candy. So I'll make a motion for that later on when we figure out where to put that.
You can make some.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Speaking of special events, I know joint commission, we talked about last meeting, we got a few numbers, and I know that they had a really good presentation, and we'll ask them to come back to council to present that. But I just wanted to present a few numbers that we had. There was roughly 3,000 people that attended. We reached 77,000 people in our advertising, 70 vendors. And when we spoke to the people there, 70% of the people sold, the vendors sold more than what they were expecting to sell. And 100% of those vendors asked if we could have a repeat event, along with RU students and faculty saying they wanted this to make it, they wanted us to make it a semester reoccurring event. So overwhelmingly pleased with everything going on there. As far as other joint commission matters, we had talked about RU doing an annual impact report to see how students positively impact our city as far as volunteering, commuting projects, et cetera. So I look forward to seeing some numbers on that that they're working on. We said that we wanted to kind of delve into a media pitch collaboration project, making sure that media through RU and the city is elevated and consistent, and we're submitting them more collectively as we're going forward to make sure that we're covering all of the areas consistently and making sure that we kind of look at our calendars on both of our ends and get a multi-year calendar going forward to make sure that both entities are maximizing the exposure for all of our events that we have that affect both sides. So we were working on that. I want to thank all of the veterans, past and present. We would not be where we are today without all of your unwavering support. And I want to wish everybody a very happy and saying, happy and safe Thanksgiving. I know a lot of us travel. If you don't travel, please be safe at home. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Kelly. Seth, what do you have this evening?
Yeah, I'll piggyback off Kelly and also hope everyone had a great Veterans Day. And we have some special veterans in this community and throughout the country, and we owe them a lot, because freedom certainly isn't free. So I'm thankful every day, as I'm sure we all are, but it's nice that we set a time, we have a time to actually dedicate to them. I also wanted to congratulate Guy Wolford on his election, and I'm certainly glad that Kelly was re-elected and will be serving with us.
Thank you.
We're very fortunate to have you two and looking forward to working with you all. So congratulations to you both. I also wanted to mention that we have a home playoff football game this Friday against Patrick County at 7:00. So happy for the Bobcats and defending that state title. We have a proud program, and I know we're all wishing them well. So good luck to the Bobcats. I'll tie on to, I had a citizen request as well that we take a look at putting a dead-end sign on Bird Street as you're going up past, or it's right across from the rec hall. His property is at the very end of the drive, and he thinks that a lot of them come up there unknowingly. And so it's a dead end. So if we could look at doing that. Told him that I would.
Good location.
Yeah, yeah. I think especially with the apartment complex right there, that sometimes people might think it's a pass-through, but it's not. So if we could take a look at that. Also, he's no longer here, but wanted to thank Dan McKinney for all he does with the Chamber. And he works hard and really does. I have a special place in my heart for small businesses as well, and he does a great job promoting them in Radford and in the New River Valley. And it really does, your local dollar spent goes a long, long way for us here, for the people who have businesses. It really is. And we have some very, very special businesses here. And I hope you'll support them on Small Business Saturday and every day. We're very fortunate in this community. Also, just wanted to say, I had talked to Greg Holbrook as well, and David, I'm glad that you touched on it too, about that hopefully we'll get our fields back in spring. I know that that's super important, not only for our rec sports, but sports tourism is huge. I've lived it and coached it, and being able to hold tournaments here and get people inside of our community is just huge. So I appreciate all the efforts with that. And I know that you guys have worked hard on, working on that, and his departments, all departments have really worked hard on that. Tim, thank you for the presentation and all the work for the electric deal. It really has been a marathon before we got, some of us got here continuing on. And thank you and David and everybody for that. It's been a long process, and I appreciate your input and knowledge on that. Also, I just wanted to say, we had a good planning commission and EDA meeting where we looked at some things, and Prospect Hill is kind of a good example of, we'd like to, and I think we've talked about it amongst ourselves as well, look at some of the other properties that the city does own that could be developed or, you know, potentially sold. I think that they have a real interest in doing that, and I certainly think that that would be a good idea as well, if we could kind of look at some of those properties and get them moving. There's a lot of momentum for development, and I'd like to take a look at those. And also, just wanted to thank our voter registrar, Lindsay Williams, the board of electors, and everyone that came out to vote. It was a lot, a huge voter turnout for Radford, which is awesome and great, and a lot goes into it. So I just wanted to thank everyone that was involved in that, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Seth. Jesse, what do you have?
Yes, so this evening, my moment of silence is dedicated to one of my best friends, Wendy. We've been friends over 35 years, and she has a pretty daunting brain surgery tomorrow. So if you don't mind, if everyone sends some love into the universe, she would appreciate that, and so would I. Again, Kelly, great to have you sitting next to me.
Oh, thank you.
And she's like, wait, what am I doing tomorrow? And Guy, welcome. I also want to say, Bobby, it's been so nice getting to know you. It really has been a pleasure, and so you will be missed.
Thank you.
And Tim, how many years have you been in your role with us?
I'm the director, 10 years and 34, 40.
So 34 years. And although this task and these decisions are daunting, with David's service, Tim's time in the job, I feel very comfortable with the direction that we're going, even though sometimes it feels like we're walking in the dark. But I appreciate you guys so much for your expertise and staying with us through some pretty challenging times.
More than.
Yes, yes. And also, Taylor Office Supply, they have been in business since 1942 in our community. Tay's a friend of mine, and I noticed that he had posted that his great-grandmother started Taylor's Office of Play in 1942, was run by his grandparents, and then by his dad for 58 years. That is an amazing legacy in our community. So I want to just thank really that entire family for their investment and commitment in the community all these years.
And they're still making office calls.
They sure do, don't they? They still do business the old-fashioned way, right? Door-to-door and face-to-face. I appreciate that. I was just going to mention the lights going up. I always feel so much more festive, even if it's 75 degrees. If in the evening, when it's dark at 6 o'clock, we have our pretty lights in our community. It just really, I can't tell you, just, well, I'm sure you all know, it just really warms the heart to see all of that at 6 o'clock when it's dark. I did have a CPMT meeting. I mentioned that that stands for Community Policy and Management Team, probably one of my more difficult boards that I'm on. Right now, they're having all of us individuals on the board do a case review. I did conduct my case review, and I will say that it was a pass. We did great, and I was very thorough. We also have a new business coming into our community that presented. They're called Shining Diamonds, and they will work with our students. I mentioned that, you know, the price keeps escalating because the services keep going up, and really the services continue to be somewhat limited. And so they're coming, and they're going to work with our children. One area that they've had great success, because we have phoned the areas that they're in, is truancy. So they have one-on-one mentorship, they have mentors, and they have about six kids total, but they follow them very, very closely. So they work with the entire family, but I was very impressed with what they can do with truancy. The good news is they're making the investment to come, and we can use them as we feel it would benefit our students and our children and our community. If it doesn't, we don't have to use them. If it does, then we can continue that partnership. So it's very little risk to us, because they have all of the accreditations and the recommendations. So I'm anxious to see what they can do to help us. And really, that's about it. It's been a fairly quiet two weeks for me. I'll take it. So, that's it.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, congratulations to Kelly and to Guy and to all the folks who put their name forward. We want to say thank you. You know, this is not an easy era to serve, to run for office, and we appreciate everybody who's willing to do that for their fellow citizens and to work for the betterment of this community. And Bobby, we've still got you for one more meeting, but thank you for your service over the last couple of years. As you see, we've gone through a lot in just two years. So it's a lot to always think about. I also wanted to mention all of our election officials. We are so thankful for them. Those are not easy jobs at all, and elections have evolved. It's not just an election day, it's really an election season. In fact, that election season technically isn't over. We have about 500 provisional ballots that are still being reviewed by the electoral board over the next few days. So I don't think it's going to change anything with the council elections. The school board elections are a little bit closer, so I don't know that that's finalized yet. But thank you to everyone that works on that, because that is not easy work, and we need more folks to be a part of it. So certainly, we need more folks to participate. We need more folks to come to council meetings and consider running for council and school board and all the things that we do, because it is a lot. And as we talked about tonight, we had a lot of good business, but these are things we've been working on literally for years, years and years, and getting there with that. I'm really excited about the power process. Tim, thank you so much. And I think we'll keep revisiting that as we get more information. When we go out to market, we'll talk with the community about that, about what that looks like as we continue down this path of battery storage. Honestly, that has been one of the most exciting things for me. We're not quite ready for it yet to make that decision tonight, but that is something that's really nice, because it increases capacity without additional generation. And it's one of those creative things that allows us to manipulate the existing electrical system to our best advantage. And I think that's a really neat piece for us to look at. And we are looking at every possibility to advantage the city of Radford for sustainability, for our electric reliability, and for our community's growth for the 21st century, so that we're able to serve Radford as it best deserves. I'm really proud of our police department with the Kalia accreditation. On a personal note, my family was involved significantly with the police department for many years in training, and education was always a huge part of that. And so to see that continue at the highest levels is so important. It makes me feel good to know that we're working to be the very best in the region, the best in the state, the best in the nation, and accompanying that with best practices. It's noted, and I think our citizens see it in terms of the interactions. And when there is any kind of challenge or issue, there's a process for it. And I know our chief is incredibly responsive to that, and I'm so appreciative of that as well. So thank you so much. We did have the Trick or Treat Trail since we met last. What an amazing event. Hundreds and hundreds of people, probably well over 1,000, were on Main Street in Radford for that event. And we had expanded it some. I know some of the folks working with student activities got some more student groups to come out. So there was a whole new little wing of student-oriented things from Radford University. And just another example of the great partnership between the city and the university, and really exciting for all of our family and friends who came out to participate in that. We do have a lot of upcoming events. The tree lining ceremony on December the 3rd. If you've not been to our library for a ceremony, it's more than just turning the switch. We've got music and refreshments and activities. And they're also going to have photos with Santa. That begins actually a week from Wednesday on November the 20th, and then again on Friday, December the 6th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. both days. Registration is required for those. So check it out at the library in person, go on their social media sites and check them out. Radford Public Library does amazing things all the time. And speaking of that, I want to thank the lamplighters. They had an amazing book sale this weekend, raising money. That program directly funds the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And so the folks who came out and participated, you're providing books for our kids from the time they get here until they go into kindergarten, and that's a wonderful way to increase literacy in the city of Radford. So a lot of really good things happening here in the city. You know, even when we have our challenges, good days are ahead of us. And with that, I will say thank you, everybody, and we will adjourn. Good night.
Good to you.
Craig, I've had several people from Pulaski County, Montgomery County reach out and tell me what it is that we, whatever it is.